All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 3rd, 2020 Regular Board Business Meeting. I think when we started these meetings virtually in March, this was not our goal. But here we are. Appreciate everybody joining us. I'm going to call to order our meeting. For roll call, we're dismissing Director O'Connell, celebrating a new grandson. The rest of the board members are in attendance. Communication from the audience, many of you, I think, listening are probably aware of this already, but time has been set aside on the agenda for citizens' requests of the board due to the statewide restrictions and in keeping with the efforts of social distancing, the meeting is conducted online rather than in person. So if you're a member of the community and wish to provide public comment, please email your comments to Avery4, that's A-V-E-R-Y-4, at gresham.k12.org.us. By 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, and your comments will be part of the public record. So we'll have time later for public comments. We have a meeting agenda. Is there any motion?
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, it's moved by Director Howard, seconded by Director Gomez to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. First up is a consent agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are matters considered by the board to be routine, and they'll be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or persons in the audience request specific items be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Our consent agenda has five items. Item B1, minutes from our regular work session November 5th. Item B2, minutes from the regular business meeting November 5th. B3, minutes from the regular work session November 19th. B4, financial report as of October 31st, 2020. And B5, policy update. That policy update specifically is policy ACB, All Students Belong, policy IIBG Technology, which is a deleted policy, and policy JBA for sexual harassment.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I just want to make a point of reference. The minutes are not attached of all those three meetings.
Let me go in and look. They might have just not been released on my end. So let me go in and see if I can check box that item for you.
Do you see next to, up at the top, under Agenda Item Details at the bottom, do you see minutes? I'm curious, because I don't think this is always consistently applied. Do you see few minutes for November 19th there?
No.
It's got a little clock.
I don't, any attachment.
The only attachment is the financial report and the policy update.
Good, good spot, Robin. So that means that just if you're logged in, you can see them, but that's not what the intent is with that item, so.
Yeah, you can see it.
So we can see it as a board, I think, if we're logged into our account, but we but the public.
But they don't show as the, right, they don't show as the they don't show as an attachment.
Okay, so I just went in and released all of them. I don't know if you need to refresh, or if you can tell if they're there now.
A chance to review it? And just, or is there, do they need to be approved now?
Well, they were in the agenda items. If you went to the agenda section, they are there. But they still aren't showing as an attachment, Sarah.
I don't think there's any obligation that we have to approve meeting minutes.
Yeah, I would just say for some purposes, just move forward, and then we can have them in the next next meeting's consent agenda, if that's all right with everyone.
So, well, so there was a motion, but there was no second to prove the consent agenda. So Director Stowers is requesting that we pull 1, 2, and 3 items, B1, 2, and 3 from the consent agenda to deal with later, after we've had them under public review. So I guess, board before us is we have a remaining consent agenda of item B4 and B5, which is financial report and a policy update.
So the first motion dies, so you need a second motion, starting over again. So I moved that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes from the regular work session November 5, minutes from the business meeting November 5, and the regular work session November 19. All else is as presented.
A second.
Okay, so moved by Director Howard, seconded by Director Stowers to approve the consent agenda items B4 and B5. Items B1, 2, and 3 are removed. Okay. Do we need any discussion?
There is no discussion in consent agenda.
There isn't. All right, thank you for checking me. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, now we move on to the recognitions, the best part. And we still haven't figured out how to do this well in a virtual environment, so here we go. We have two recognitions. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cook to, well, Mr. Cook here. Are you taking that one, Dr. Per?
Mr. Hugh is standing there for.
Okay, Mr. Hugh.
Great, thank you. Tonight, the board is asked to recognize Andrew Pate, the boys' head tennis coach at San Barlow High School. The Oregon Athletic Coaches Association recognizes San Barlow High School Andrew Pate as the Oregon nominee for the National Federation of High Schools 2019-2020 Coach of the Year Award for Boys Tennis. The NFHS has been recognizing coaches through an awards program since 1982. Andrew has been a teacher and coach at Barlow for the past 25 years. He is a National Board Certified Social Studies Teacher, and has coached both basketball and tennis in his career. Tonight, we recognize San Barlow High School's Andrew Pate for his coaching skills, dedication, and support of the San Barlow High School athletes. I know that Andrew is in attendance, and Principal Bruce Schmidt is here. On a personal note, I've worked with Andrew at San Barlow High School, teaches AP US History, fabulous class. So congratulations to Andrew for this recognition. Andrew will make sure that the certificate gets sent to San Barlow High School, so you can receive it at some point.
Might be asking for some gymnastics here, virtually, but Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Pate, do you would you want to make comment? And if not, I guess, can we promote them at all, Sarah? I told you I'd be clunky like this.
Hello, board and district executives. Thank you for the recognition. I it's an honor to be recognized. I've worked with and against a ton of great coaches in tennis and have worked with a lot of great coaches in basketball as well, so it's an honor to be recognized by coaches around the state in this way. So thank you for the recognition.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Pate, and thank you for joining us. For those who have been in the Barlow community for a while, Mr. Pate's reputation as an educator and a coach make us look really good as a district. And so we're exceptionally proud to have both he and his wife in the district, instructors Tiffany as well. Thanks for joining us. Mr. Hugh, that's not our only recognition.
It is not. We also have a second recognition from San Barlow High School, the Coach of Significance Award. Tonight, the board is being asked to recognize Jay Jacobson, the girls' varsity soccer coach from San Barlow High School. San Barlow High School's girls' head soccer coach Jay Jacobson has been named the recipient of the United Soccer Coaches Association High School Coach of Significance Award for 2020. The award is intended to recognize members who are coaching for character and using soccer to teach life lessons to high school students. Jacobson has been coaching at San Barlow High School as the varsity girls' soccer coach for the past three seasons, and has 15 years of experience coaching at the high school and youth levels. He has been twice named Monhood Conference Coach of the Year. In the past two years, the San Barlow High School varsity team has made it to the quarterfinals. Tonight, we recognize San Barlow High School Coach Jay Jacobson for his coaching skill, dedication, and support of our San Barlow High School student athletes. And I'm not sure I see him here in the audience, but I know Principal Bruce Schmidt is here in the audience. Mr. Jacobson, are you here in the, as an attendee?
I don't think, I agree with you, Mr. Hugh. I don't think he is, but Mr. Schmidt, if you're available to be promoted.
Said he's trying to get in. So maybe if Mr. Schmidt can get promoted right now, gives Mr. Jacobson a minute to try to get into the the meeting here tonight.
I think generally, just to fill the void, it's when I say it's an honor to have you all attend, we recognize as a board that your highest recognition is probably not a board acknowledgement of an award that is national and statewide. But it is, it makes us work particularly meaningful when you get to see the experts who are making students' lives better. And so we really do appreciate you taking time to be here with us. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, am I in?
You're in.
All right, cool. Yeah, Coach Jacobson has been trying to get in. We've been trying to get him a link to his school email address and by phone. I do know he really wanted to be here tonight. Jay is also a district employee and works at West Orient Middle School. He's worked with our boys' soccer program as well. He's been an outstanding addition to our varsity staff as a head coach, and has done phenomenal work with our young ladies. Being a coach of significance, I do want to emphasize that that is all about character education and character performance on the field. He was nominated by his players, so that is a huge testament to the impact that he's made with our young ladies and in our program. It's not just about wins and losses. One of our classic interview questions is, what's most important to you? And I always look for the coach that says, I'm in the business of developing young men and young women before wins and losses, and that's the kind of coach he is and the kind of person he is. So we're super proud of him, super proud of our young ladies in the program that he's really promoting at Barlow. So I wish he were able to be here and hear that. This is being recorded, so hopefully we can send him the link when it's all done. And I just want to say, on behalf of Jay, hey, thanks for the recognition and honor, and thanks for having us here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Board Chair Peterson.
All right. This time, we're going to keep moving in our agenda. We're on to a superintendent and district leadership team report. Dr. Pereira.
Thank you, Chair Peterson. I do have a few things to share out, and I will also say, if Jay joins us during this, I'm happy to give up some of my time to speak. But I wanted to share, continue to serve on the Governor's Reopening Committee and learning a lot through that. We also know that there's been some new release of relaxation, if you will, some of the regulations that allows us to bring in student athletes for conditioning. So I'm sure Jayden and Rest will have their teams out, starting actually next week. We have a soft start, starting on December 7th, with a hard start on the 14th, and continuing through. We've, since our last session, we've had a few town halls, including one last night with community members. My last, my highest count, I believe, at one point was over 150 participants who we shared the information regarding the metrics and our tentative plans for if we're able to do some limited in-person, as well as when we're able to do hybrid. And again, those were just sharing of process procedures of decision-making, and as well as how those things will look with families, and sharing that overview with them. By no means it was that we were coming back, and I want to make that very clear as well. We were just really sharing the information and the decision process with our community. I've also had the pleasure of hosting a couple Student Advisory Committee meetings as well. I have students representing every secondary school in the district, about four or five from each one. And last night was the second of our sessions where we were able to talk about the norms and the purpose of our group in our meeting, and that is to invite the students to lend their voice to important issues and concerns throughout the district. We also gave them an opportunity to select some topics, and I just wanted to report out that we have topics such as school climate that came from students, discrimination and equity, budgeting policy, grading and instruction, and mental health and social emotional learning. So those are the top five things that came from our student group. Our groups will be on subcommittees according to whichever one of those categories they are passionate about to be able to serve and get input and feedback. By no means are they locked into one, because it can certainly float between the different as well as they will be readily available for any opportunities for board interaction as well. I think they're really excited about that. And then we wrapped up our session with the All Students Belong policy and information from the state, and I think I think I saw every student sit up a little taller in their chairs. We were talking about Oregon being one of the first states to kind of push that forward, and really do try to make sure that we ensure that every student has a safe environment for learning, no matter where they are, whether that's virtually or in-person. And so, really excited about that, and I think, again, they walk away with great pride that there's not only their school district, but the state itself is supporting that. And I did share with them that the board would be looking at that policy this evening, so I don't know if there are any students watching, but it is definitely something that take great pride in. And sorry, that's all of my report. I don't know if I have anybody from DLT have anything to share out, but that's all specifically from me.
I'm happy to give an academic update from the I L T department. If, okay, all right, board chair and superintendent and and directors, I just want to let you know that we're continuing on our, not only updating our community around our limited in-person instruction and also hybrid, but we're also working on the large-scale events that are happening and ongoing. So we we continue to get updates from ODE on different waivers to postpone different things, one including our spring 2021 testing. They're currently asking for community input on that waiver. And again, that's a state community input. We also just reviewed our iReady Math and Reading data in K, excuse me, K8, which is our fall administration, which is similar to previous years, and I think this information is not only informative, it is formative assessments that will guide our instruction, and it probably will be great to have that spring as well, since we may see some postponing of testing and other things to be able to accurately assess our students' growth. We are also working with coordinating food services and transportation and facilities around return-to-person instruction, along with just wanting you to know a little bit about our dual-language instruction. Our HB3499 competitive grant was received and will be spent by June 2021. Planning for that support and with our English language learners has been ongoing, and we're monitoring students' progresses. The middle school math and technology professional development has been moving on, and we're also reaching out to all of our schools. You'll have some updates after January, but we are meeting with our leaders and district leadership teams around the school improvement plans, and continuing our incomplete and credit recovery planning. A lot of other things, one update to let you know about is because of the urgency around calendaring for limited in-person instruction and and for hybrid, we have had to delay some of the Canvas training, and training is very important to implementation. And although we will continue to use Canvas, as you know, we've adopted and moved it for our learning management system, we are slowly, and more slowly, rolling that out, so we have the time for our health and safety of in-person schedules. And then, last but not least, I wanted to just say a few things about the Student Support Service and their team. They're really revamping their evaluation system to include best practices for response to intervention or multi-tiered systems of support around all growth, and that model of identification for special education, and we continue to meet the child, find responsibilities as we know. And so I appreciate being able to provide that global perspective of moving forward, and also the urgency of our hybrid and limited in-person updates.
Chair Peterson, there was also, I'm not sure if Jordan wants to speak now or later regarding the release of the proposed budget from the governor this past week. I know I shared that with you all through email as a board, but you could talk a little, add a little bit about the school state school fund, as well as some of the supplemental budgetary items such as Student Success Act, etc. So Jordan, I don't know if you were planning to do that now or during, later during a financial report. I'm happy either way. You're probably on mute, Jordan.
And I think you're, you're not showing as muted, but we're not picking up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. That was a headset issue. Yeah, I think this is, this is a good time, Superintendent Pereira. Overall, the news from the governor's proposed budget is, I think, good for education, given the economic environment that we're in. She has proposed a $9.1 billion state school fund. That is marginally improved over the current biennium, but school districts are anticipating significant savings to PERS due to the PERS reform that happened in the last legislative session. And so this does represent, for many school districts in Oregon, a current service level budget. That is not the case specifically for Gresham Barlow, but it is very close, and so we're grateful for the advocacy efforts by COSA or, excuse me, the Confederation of School Administrators and the Oregon School Boards Association to encourage the governor in this way. The governor pointed out that this is the first budget that has intentionally, state budget that has intentionally centered the voices of our communities of color, and she accomplished that through a racial justice committee that informed this budget. And so a part of that is also a much higher level of funding for the student investment account, which is the K12 portion of the Student Success Act at $778 million for the biennium, and fully funding Measure 98, which is the High School Success Act, High School Student Success Act, I believe, something like that, $314 million for that. All in all, a $10.2 billion investment in education, which is substantially up from the current year. This budget does require $200 million from the Education Stabilization Fund, which is much less from that fund despite a much higher budget than what we anticipated when we first started talking about this in the spring, and then again in the summer. So all in all, like I said, I think this is good news for schools that the governor has started this strong. Of course, the legislature is who appropriates resources, very similar to the process we have here. Staff brings forward a proposed budget, and then the legislature determines whether or not to fund the budget in that way. I know that we've already heard some pretty significant pushback from the healthcare community. Just that they would be receiving a cuts budget in the middle of a pandemic is cause for concern. So I think the legislature is certainly going to have some tough conversations ahead of them during this session as they determine what the funding level looks like for education. I also wanted to mention that the governor has set aside in her proposed budget $6.3 million for summer programs specifically for Title I schools. That is a biennial amount, and so spread out across the 196 school districts in Oregon, I think that that's a little slim, but I do appreciate the effort from the governor's office to help recover some of the lost learning time. I think that's that's the main highlights.
The connectivity information as well, Jordan. The money's for K12, 138 million. For the connectivity, sorry, 17.5 for connectivity. I just wanted to share that the government does have in her budget a proposal to help support school districts and communities with broadband connectivity. I think there's $17 million for that, a little over $17 million in the budget, proposed, of course. But I just wanted to share that the state does recognize that we do have communities that have a hard time with the Wi-Fi connection. Of course, during this pandemic, it has brought it to everyone's attention as well.
Any other updates?
No, that's it, sir. Thank you.
I, yeah, Mr. Hugh, I think you're raising your hand to point out that we have Coach Jacobson.
Coach Jacobson is now been promoted to a panelist, and
Well, Mr. Jacobson, I was going to introduce it, that we recognized you before, unfortunately, without you in the room, which wasn't your problem. It was ours, but we're extremely grateful for the way that you've invested in student lives. You missed that part. You missed a great tribute from Mr. Schmidt, but we wanted to give you the floor if you had anything to say.
No, I mean, I just, I appreciate you guys recognizing me getting this award. It was a great honor to receive it. As you guys know, it was, I was nominated not only by my players, but also coaches around the state, so it's great to be recognized by some of my colleagues, coaches around the state as well. So it's a great honor. You know, it's a pretty significant award to earn, and I appreciate it, and it's kind of a reflection of my team as well. You know, I, over this last couple of years, I've been measuring success by the relationship with my players, you know, about their lives after high school and after athletics, and so I think the wins and the awards come along the way in that process is building that relationship with your players. So, you know, I'm glad to have won it, glad to win it for the school and the community, so I appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, thanks so much for joining us. You were a product of Gresham Barlow Schools as well, were you not?
Yeah, yeah, graduated from Barlow in 1998.
Well, thanks for giving back and for being here, Jay.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, excellent. So, Dr. Pereira, there were no other updates from you or your team. Any questions from the board of the district leadership? Okay. This time, we have a couple of presentations set aside. The first one up is a bond update, and Jordan, could you introduce this to us?
Thank you, Chair Peterson. We have Rick Renown from Cornerstone Management Group with us tonight to talk about the status of our bond program. Overall, the program does remain on schedule and on budget, and we have not experienced any delays, despite any significant delays despite early concerns about the risks to supply chain caused by COVID. We have not had any issues with our supply chain. We have had a couple of jobs along the way that we've had to as a precaution, shut down for COVID. As a precaution shutdown for COVID concerns. Luckily, that hasn't turned into any issues for the school district. We also did have one injury to a subcontractor on one of those real cold days that we had. We had a slip on a roof, but happy to report that that person is recovering well. And other than that, the, the jobs have been going well. And with that, I'll hand it over to Rick to go into more details about the budget and progress on these jobs.
Thank you, Jordan. Good evening, Superintendent Board Chair, the other board members and whoever might be joining us. I was thinking back, I started working on this bond in 2016, working on budgets and schedules. I think in general, the work that has been done by the teams on all the projects has been great. It hasn't been without challenges, but to the credit of the team, every challenge that we were faced with, we found a solution to. Want to share a little bit of information with you tonight, if I could. I think it went in your board packet. I have the Bond Project Status Reports for several schools and like, I'd like to go over them with you. I also have an overview of the projects we've completed successfully on the bond so far. Kind of listed by school and by scope. And then lastly, I also want to share with you what we have in front of us. For the 2021 year and we've already started the design process and the strategy on how to buy that work. So.
Excuse me, Rick.
Yes.
Just real fast, before you get started, we do not have these documents attached to the agenda. We will attach them to the minutes. But if you would like to tell me which documents you're going to be referencing, I will present to the board.
Okay, let's start with the Gordon Russell Middle School Bond Project Status Report, please.
Okay. Oh, I don't have access to screen sharing. Sarah, can you? Sorry, board, we will get there.
Appreciate the agility.
Sarah is a lifesaver. All right.
Thank you, Jordan. So what you see on the screen is a dashboard summary of. The projects we've been producing these both for board reports and for reports to the Bond Oversight Committee on a regular basis. If you look at the start and finish. Gordon Russell did get finished on time. We had some challenges with additional scope. There is an issue with some glass in the library that the manufacturer's rep and our architect are going to look, look at. We think it needs to be replaced and we're going to work with them to resolve that issue. And also draw your attention to where we are financially. The middle schools have been very successful. In terms of where we landed on a financial perspective. We're still closing out and we'll bring you back the actual numbers, but if things remain as they are. The Gordon Russell Middle School Project will return over a million dollars to the program contingency. And we're working on opportunities to complete the bond promise at all the buildings with the money that we've saved at Gordon Russell. If you could bring up Dexter McCarty next, please, Jordan, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Similar story there. We, we had that work continue into October. It's completed now. If you look down under the schedule update, when we get substantially complete, that means it's ready to occupy. And we achieve that. Our architect has created punch list and the general contractor and subcontractors are working to complete that. We have an issue on the roof there that we've created a, an area that's ponding. We want to get that corrected. Ponding over time creates issues with roofs and I know our roofing consultant and. Contractor are responsible for that arrow roofing. We'll work together to get that completed. Again, if I could draw your attention to where we are financially under the. Financial summary, again, we are targeting to be under budget there by approximately a million dollars. And that money will eventually be transferred to the program contingency to help us with completing the bond promise. If we could go to Clear Creek Middle School, please, Jordan, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Again, that project is. Complete. We are working on, on adding cooling to that gym. One of the things that we realized is that we're trying to, through parity, have cooling in as many gyms as we can afford. So that they can be available for events and during the times of year when it's a little bit warmer than it is this month. Again, I would draw your attention to where we are financially. Another great report. We're trending to be somewhere above, about $1.1 million under budget. And that money will find its way to the contingency and be available for other projects. If we could look at Gresham High School next, that would be great.
Sorry, I'm working on it, Rick.
No problem.
And actually, Rick, if I could. Real fast, before I turn this one over to you, I did want to. Share with the board on this document, you are going to see a, a less favorable budget situation. And I didn't want to make Rick have to deliver that. That though is due to the contract amendment that we brought to the board. Several months, maybe not several months ago, but a while back regarding. The concession stand project at Gresham High. So this is. I, I just wanted to be clear that this is not in addition to that. This is a result of that.
Right.
And I'll let you take it from there, Rick.
Thank you, Jordan. So Gresham High was the largest financial project that we took on. In some ways, it was the most complex with the phasing that the project team had to work through. We are still working towards completion there. The substantial completion date is about. December 9th. We're going to be really close to that. And again, substantial complete just means it's ready for its intended use. It doesn't mean we finish the punch list along the way. I would remind the board that at this school, we spent a tremendous amount of money. Replacing the gym, working on the pool entry, completing a great concession stand and building. If you've been to that. School since we've been working on completion, the finishes are exceptional. Along with Sam Barlow, the auditorium here will be used for incredible events in the future. And we, we will balance this budget. So the next time you see it, we will be balanced. We just haven't had time to work through the process to transfer money from the contingency. There's plenty of money in the contingency, particularly. With the money that the middle schools will be giving back for us to complete this project successfully. If we could look at Sam Barlow next, Jordan, that would be great. Thank you. Sam Barlow. We, we brought other districts out to Sam Barlow to look at what can happen. To make a building change. The addition that we did there with the new classrooms. Causes to really take a look at the existing classrooms and, and make sure that we didn't in one building have. Some new incredible classrooms with some classrooms that needed some renovation. And so we found a way with several challenges, both from a schedule perspective, the phasing. We dealt with hazardous materials. We really dealt with a lot of issues there. But we've worked and the domestic water pipe system there has been upgraded. So we've done a lot of great things there. Financially, if you look at the original estimate, we were going to spend about 70 million. We're going to spend about 83,900,000. One issue there that I would just like to inform the board of is lusted water is. Rebuilding a reservoir previously owned by the city of Gresham to provide additional. Water to the system in the event that a fire needed to be dealt with. That project has delayed a little bit just because it's taken a long time to get to the design process. We have got approval from the city to continue to occupy our building, even though that. Updated water system won't be completed until about 2022. And we, we are anticipating some project savings there. John Abel, the project manager, been working on that is. Working with our contractor and at our next update, we'll give you an actual outcome where that ended up financially. The next document I'd like to share with the board is the project summary, Jordan. It's, it's the one that lists all the schools, shows what we've done in terms of meeting the scope defined by the different, thank you, there it is. So we've been working on this document for a month or two. It lists all the projects we've worked on in the left column. And, and we tied back to. The documents that were used in the pre-bond election phase to define, define scope. You can see, if you look closely, it talks about low voltage, it talks about secure main entries, it talks about. Internally locking systems for the door hardware and it just describes the scope that it was included in the bond promise. If you look at the columns below those scope descriptions, you can see that where we have. Added the check mark in the green boxes, that scope is done. And so if you look at that for a moment, you'll see that. Most of the scope is already done. We're going to wrap the rest of it up in 2021. And I'll go over that with you in just a moment. We also decided to, on this document, describe the additional scope that we were able to add by building. So if you look at that column, you can see that, for example, at East Orient. We did some interior paint to really make that building look better. The frame room, which is the room that the MDFs and the IDF supporting technology, they needed to be upgraded. We did that. And if you just take a look, once you get this document. Most of the buildings got additional scope. The one that got the most additional scope again is Gresham High School with the gym replacement. We really made the pool lobby safer and doing some improvements in. The pool play area. We decided not to describe the concessions stand work as additional scope. Because it was part of the bond planning process, even though. We decided to do that as probably the best way to use our money versus a seismic upgrade and end up with. The existing gym. I've seen photos of it, the, the, just the interior and, and how. It's going to be painted, it is going to be incredible and that'll be a great gem that. Students and the community will use for decades. The last thing I wanted to share with the board tonight is the 2021 scope and cost summary. Thank you, Justin or Jordan. And what you can see is we have work left, left at East Orient, Hogan Cedars, Highland, Springwater Trail and West Orient. We have confirmed the scope that was included in the bond promise for each school and that's defined. In the column that defines a scope by school. We also have put together. The construction estimate, that does not include the entire budget. There'll be, in some cases, design fees, in many cases, permit fees, so there will be other costs. But this is the construction targets that Jordan and my team have worked on. It's still a lot of work. We're taking a different approach this time in an effort to try to save about 15% per project. We're, we're going to try to do this work in general without hiring a general contractor. My managers will be involved. Mr. Taylor from Facility, his team will be involved and we're still clarifying exactly how. We want to buy that and take it to market. And the last thing I would share to the board. I have the opportunity each week to talk to a lot of contractors. We have about 15 contractors doing projects with Cornerstone now at Gresham and other districts. And we're entering into a great market to buy in. For the last four years, myself and my team and, and other district employees have been chasing bidders, both general contractors and subcontractors. Because for a while, there was. More work in the marketplace than labor. So you had to become an owner that attracted contractors to come and work in your district. Gresham has a tremendous reputation in the marketplace and so we were able to attract the contractors that we needed. For the projects we've completed. What's happened now is in a very short period of time for different reasons, COVID. Some political issues that are out there. Some projects have been put on hold. Other projects have been canceled. And so the bids that my company has been involved with in the last six weeks, it's changed. We had a, a project where we had 13 plumbers bid one project, 13 electricians bid. We started another high school renovation at another district. For the first time in my career, we received 12 proposals from contractors who wanted to do the job. And what we want to do now is take this last group of projects to market and. Try to position ourselves to get great coverage. Great coverage usually leads us to good competitive pricing. And so we're looking forward to bringing you back requests for. Contract awards. We may see some projects come in under budget because it looks like this shortage of work will. Continue through fall of next year. And so we think we're going to go to market when contractors need work and that usually is a great outcome. If you have any questions about any of the projects that we've reported on or any projects that you've heard about issues, I would. Be pleased to answer any questions to the best of my ability. Well, Rick, I'd, I'd have a question.
Well, Rick, I'd have a question. When you say substantial completion, are does that usually come before, like, site remediation from outgoing contractors? Is that like exterior effects of large equipment and so forth?
That's a great question. So substantial completion is a word associated with the contracts that we sign. When we hire a contractor, we establish the date by which we want them to be substantially complete. That does not mean done, done. And it just means that the city will give us occupancy and the renovation work or new work that we're doing is ready. Following substantial completion, we go through a process for training with staff, cleaning the buildings. Construction clean is not as significant as school clean. So but it's just a tool that we use to confirm that they got done on time. Some projects, there's penalties if they don't. But we pre-qualified all of our contractors here, and so we have worked with really good contractors. But substantially complete just begins the process to achieve final completion. When we achieve final completion, there's a certificate of final completion issued by the architect, signed by the contractor and the district, and then we do final payment and totally close the project out. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thanks. Thanks, Rick.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the board or else I ask my next one?
Here we go.
We just had a question in the past, and if you're not, I sort of wouldn't expect you to be ready to answer this one, Rick, but it specifically deals with Clear Creek Middle School. Because we seem to have had, we were alerted to that, we've had some issues with that with the previous construction, probably by materials or that just aren't in necessarily widespread use now.
Right.
And we had the question come up as a board a couple of months ago when we received an update about, should we expect that most of the critical remediations that we should ever expect at Clear Creek have been completed in this bond process? Or is that, did we not open up enough of the building to really know that?
No, it's a great question. You know, you never know what you're going to find when you, when you, when you dig and or when you open up buildings. That building, we did find a fair amount of water infiltration, which was caused by some siding that wasn't great. Certain products do well in Oregon and certain products don't do well in Oregon. Ephyx and Stucco. Stucco is a cement product that we put on buildings. It tends to crack, and if you don't put a moisture barrier behind it, it tends to leak. Ephyx is the same thing. We had an envelope consultant that specializes in doing testing and verifying where we had water infiltration. And every place that we found, we had water infiltration, we addressed. And we went through a process to pick products that would match with, match what's there, but will do much better keeping the water out. And we did put a moisture barrier behind it. So in the event that water does get through the exterior skin, it drains down and drains out, and it doesn't go into the building. But yeah, we did deal with everything that we found.
All right. Any questions from the board? Rick, as always, thank you for joining us and thanks for leading these projects through.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, at this time, we move on to our return to learn metrics update. And this one's going to go over to Lisa Riggs. Pretty enthusiastic about that.
Share Peterson and Board and Superintendent Perer. I am going to just share a quick update with you tonight that was attached already. But if Sarah would like being to share it, I'm happy to do that. Just wanting to give you updates to what it is that we follow on a weekly basis and the rates of that. Just a couple of things would be currently, and we'll get into the presentation if I'm able to share.
Sure, Peterson, while Lisa's bringing that up on the screen, I just wanted to share that we do try to share these out to you all on a regular basis with the intent to inform you as well as our public. So I know that sometimes some of these things may seem done that, but we also want to make sure that we're communicating this information to our stakeholders as well.
Sorry about that. Okay, resume share. Here's the large screen. The metrics will tell us when we're able to move forward. And you're very familiar with this first dashboard, which you can find on our website and or you can cover it, that we just connect to our two counties. Unfortunately, the cases are actually both in the not met and also in the highest area for both Clockmouth County and Multnomah County for the positivity rate and the case per 100,000. And the next is just a reminder of how we keep track of the case counts. And the last case count came this December 1st at the 1,201 case counts prior to this board meeting. So again, we're following this carefully. We know that AASA and others, ODE, and again, others are coming up with what we are able to do around the metrics that our two counties are dealing with. And again, not able to implement the hybrid approach or the limited in-person instruction in Multnomah County, although the planning and things are certainly going into continuation, as I said earlier, we're postponing some of that professional learning time to directly support the schools that will be needing to plan with their staff and to prepare for that safety side of these numbers. That is the update. Now it's just a matter of answering any questions that people might have. I know that you follow it in the daily news. I know that you're following the trend around the nation. We're talking obviously about larger shutdowns for Oregon and also getting some others weighing in around the differences between adults and students and the, what we would really like our communities to be able to prepare for.
Any questions from the board? I'm sorry, Lisa, I had a thought that might benefit us to just make sure we're looking apples to apples. And this is, I would normally handle this offline, but once I have a thought, it just comes out. And that is in the metrics. So we're looking at two, kind of two different things. The case counts, so we're monitoring those daily case counts, but those aren't really the metric that affects our back to school. What we want to look at is county case rate.
Right. Return metrics that are also shared. Yeah, the return metrics are what we shared in your, I went over them, however.
Oh, no, they're there. I'm sorry, Lisa. They're there. They're under community spread is keeping us. Yep. So you had it. I was looking at the case counts prior, so I apologize. So we're at 550 cases per 100,000 in Multnomah County.
Where you're looking, yes.
Yep, okay, on the return metrics slide.
And sure, Peterson, remember that that is our litmus test as we are guiding, navigating our ways through this. Once we meet those, then we bring that to the board to say yea or nay, as well as the health authority to move forward or not. But right now, we're all on remote until we can have our metrics are better.
Yeah, okay, we've we've talked about this a lot. I would think one will probably know when those case counts are driving down, so we'll be able to anticipate a reopening absent of a big spike. And secondly, I think, I believe the board would be inclined to have whatever meeting you need on almost an emergency basis as soon as we start to hit that number.
We would appreciate that.
That's my inclination, board. I'm happy to be slapped down with that. But I, yeah, this is hard, and we know that. Thank you for that update, Lisa. Board, any questions that my misreading a slide provoked? All right. We have a recess. And I think we should take it. We're gonna, it's 8:05, let's reconvene at 8:15 and finish our meeting. Thanks, everybody. All right, if you're back in the meeting, if you wouldn't mind just maybe turn on your video just so we can see you if you're either on the board or soon to present. All right, if you're back in the meeting, if you wouldn't mind just maybe turn on your video just so we can see you if you're either on the board or soon to present. Yeah, I'll just give it another minute or two. All right, we're going to reconvene. And first up is committee meeting minutes or reports. We have meeting minutes from the Policy Review Committee, November 5th. Those are in the public record. I don't anticipate any conversation about that. But okay, so we'll move on. Next up is Association Reports. First up is the Gresham Barlow Education Association with Rhett. I'm in. Thanks for joining us, Rhett.
Hey, thank you for having me. Appreciate it, Board Chair Superintendent. Thank you for your time. Just want to wish everyone and hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving. And an awesome holidays as, as those times are coming up and that we can celebrate as best as we can during these crazy times. But I just want to just let the board know that, and you probably already know this, is that we successfully bargained an MOU with James and John pretty much for the last, I don't know, seems like the last five years or so, but it's finally done and signed and we can move on and continue to move forward. And we're looking forward to more discussions as we move into a possible hybrid later on in 2021 and, and as we also are looking forward at some point bargaining another new contract here in the next year as well. We are actually at that time where we have to start thinking about that as well, since we did a one-year contract this last was it spring, I believe? Yeah, so we're going to continue to move forward with that. I just wanted to pass on information from our members, our teachers. They are, I know, looking forward to the winter break. They have been working extremely hard since, as you know, since March through the summer and this fall and just working on so many different things and just having a lot of things put on their plates. And they are doing the best that they can. I know they're exhausted and tired and ready for a well-deserved break. So I just wanted to pass that along that they are, they're working their tails off as long, as well as everybody else in our district as we continue to try to move forward and do the best that we can for our students and our families and this community that we so love and want to continue to serve to the best of our ability. So with that, that is my report.
All right, thank you again for joining us. Next up is Oregon Schools Employees Association, OSEA, with T. Ross. Thanks for joining us, dear.
Thank you, Chair Peterson, fellow members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Pereira. Last month, we held nominations for our executive board. We have one change. I'd like to welcome Kathleen Gloss as our third vice president. She is a, an EA at Clear Creek Middle School, and she is also replacing Barbo Hashi. We would also like to thank Barbo Hashi for her past, present, and future contributions to classified staff. And that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, dear. Okay, next, we have citizens' requests of the board. So time has been set aside for citizens' requests of the board. In keeping with the efforts of social distancing, we're conducting our meeting online rather than in person. So in a typical in-person meeting, we would invite people would come, they'd file their statement with the board secretary, and then they'd be, have an opportunity to speak, time permitting. And unfortunately, in an online environment that as in many things, that level of social engagement just isn't, isn't afforded to us right now as much as we would like it to be. So the way we're improving this process at every step, we think. And so comments are submitted online by emailing Sarah Avery. Again, that email address is Avery, A V E R Y, four at gresham.k12.org.us. We received 14 public comments submitted for this meeting. And I will list them. And then what I'm going to ask for is a loosely representative sample with just two or three folks sharing their comments if they're comfortable doing so. So first, Paul Holland submitted a a comment about helping kids overcome barrier of playing high school sports. Steve Edwards wanted to address Gresham Barlow's refusal to allow high school sports. Doug Keller, on the topic of bringing kids back to school and sports. Owen Arn, bringing back school sports. Emily Goodwin, about senior year sports. Cambry Juusto, about OSAA sports. Alex Stein, bringing back Gresham Barlow Sports. Jimmy Proctor, about bringing back sports. Kelly Rasmussen, opening the facility, starting limited in-person instructions. Alyssa Stumbo, about school sports. Alexa Edwards, from a former student athlete, time to open sports. Holly Regelman, begin to open gyms and pools for practicing and conditioning. Wendy Nelson, student athlete, access to pools, courts, and weight rooms. And B. Younts, high school sports. So with that, so the public knows going forward what we'll ask as you submit those comments. If you wouldn't mind, and you'll probably be asked if you don't provide explicitly, we're going to ask if you'd be willing to present these comments in a virtual setting. Because there's logistics to, to running a virtual meeting. We want to sort that out in a way that's similar to how we would conduct this in person. So with that, we appreciate all your comments. You can see that there is a common thread, though there are distinct statements, and all of those statements are in the public record. If you go to board information on the website, open up this meeting and open up item I1, which is what we're at right now, which is citizens' request of the board. You'll see the list of letters in, in full, and you can see that they are in record. But with that, I'd like to ask Sarah to promote Alexa Edwards to a panelist briefly. And Alexa, we're going to ask you to keep it to three minutes as best as you can and just share your comments with the board and the public. If you're available. Okay, you're muted right now, but Alexa, thanks so much for joining us. And please introduce yourself, your relationship with Gresham Barlow, and then provide your comment. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So my name's Alexa Edwards. I am a former student at San Barlow High School. I graduated with the class of 2018. And I played volleyball, and then I also did track and field throughout my four years. So I know very well background of a student athlete. But just a quick question, Blake, did you want me to read my whole email that I submitted or just like hash out the main parts?
You're welcome to share whatever you want to. I think your email would be a great place, and I think you're well within three minutes if you read the, the whole email.
Okay, perfect. Then I'll just go ahead.
Thanks, Alexa.
So today I wanted to talk about and express my concerns about students not participating in sports on the, the new OHA guidelines. So Dr. Pereira, I would think that as a collegiate athlete, you would understand the dire need for students to be participating in athletics, especially considering our current climate with distance learning, where students are sitting pretty much all day, sitting on their computers. I know my brother is a senior this year, so he's holed up in his room pretty much for about six hours a day. School is much more than grades. It's much more than writing papers or sitting at a desk. Sports and athletics and any other activities are also an important part of being a student. Even the OHA recognizes that participation in physical activity is vital to the health and the well-being of young people. When I entered high school for the first time, it was my first time being in a public school setting. I've been in very small school settings before, and so sports were a way for me to come in and to meet a lot of people, and I ended up creating some friendships that have lasted, you know, over these past seven years now. And it sort of eased my anxiety going into school, gave me a place that I know I could go to after school and gave me a place to you know, get out all my energy after, you know, sitting in a classroom all day. You know, I remember a lot of long weekends at tournaments. And through sports, I was able to work on creating goals for myself and being able to push for those instead of just going in there to, you know, play sports for fun. I mean, sports are, you know, of course, still for fun. But I've all, but also being on a tight schedule with school gave me the chance to become much more disciplined in my work and being able to create that schedule. And I think a lot of kids, you know, as they're emerging from middle school into high school, and you know, those first couple of years are very essential in learning how to be more disciplined and to work by yourself and not always having someone on top of you. You know, I got the chance to earn a couple awards at the end of my senior year, which was really fun because they sort of represented some goals that I had set for myself, and those goals were be, because I was able to participate in school sports. And, you know, I believe that under these new guidelines that they have given us, I think it's time for us to open and to do what we can. I mean, you know, I understand that we're not going to be able to participate to the fullest extent that we normally would have on a normal year. But I think it's time to open up and allow for what we can do by keeping our doors shut, not doing anything right now. Which I understand that, I believe, just the other day, we were granted permission to start doing some practices, but the more time we take away from kids, the more scholarships we take away, because for some kids, scholarship, athletic scholarships are the only way that they're going to be able to pay for college. For the seniors especially, they already lost their junior spring season. And to see them lose another season after working their tails off for years is something that I don't want to see. And I am asking the school board to allow clubs to use the social facility, schools' facilities as a short-term measure. This would give school coaches the option to start a club that holds liability insurance, therefore relieving the district liability, yet still protecting coaches. We can take all the necessary precautions and still allow students to play. And by opening up sports, this is possibly the only way for students to retain a healthy balance between school and life. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for submitting a comment and joining us today.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Sir, if I see that Holly Regelman is an attendee, could you please promote her to provide comment, Holly, only if you're comfortable, but please also as we're working through the logistics of this, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, your relationship to the district, and, and then as with Alexa, try to keep comments to about three minutes. Appreciate it. So Holly, are you there? That's okay. We just don't have audio. We do have video of you, but. Not yet. That's that's, okay, how about we? You, if you, if you signal when you feel like you've trouble shot your way into, into a corner, if you give me a thumbs down if it's not going to work, then that's okay. Otherwise, we'll, we'll be patient. By the way, thanks to comprehensive distance learning, this is exactly what my life looks like right now. It's me.
That better?
It is. Success.
I had to bring in the technology expert.
That's my life now. But thanks for joining us, Holly. If you wouldn't mind, introduce yourself, your relationship with the district, and then comments about three minutes, please. Thanks.
Sure. Thanks for being patient. So I'm Holly Regelman. I'm a parent of four students in the district, and I am also married to a Barlow water polo coach. I also went to Barlow High School. Actually, I lived within the district my whole life, so all Barlow schools. So I just, I submitted the letter. I can read that if I can get that pulled up. But basically, what I focused on saying was appreciation for what you guys have already done. In allowing sports to train and practice as soon as possible. Hopefully, that gets started by this week. I know the school has been pushing stuff out and trying to get kids registered. So just really appreciate you guys hearing people on that and being willing to open that up. And then just kind of a continuation, the what's allowed. Starting next week is really minimal. I know it has to start there, but there's some restrictions that make it difficult. One of those things is the weather and the rain. It's winter in Oregon, and we know what that means, very cold. And neither high school, Gresham or Barlow have covered areas or much covered area. The bleachers is a small area, but the district does have some schools, grade schools and middle schools that have covered areas. So if those would be allowed to be accessed for workouts to get us through, especially the colder months, if the restrictions stay in place. I realize the metrics right now don't allow for indoor activities. But I just hope that you guys as a board, as superintendent Pereira and as the district are advocating for the students. Athletes to get back to sports, even if we don't have in-person learning. So I know I've been emailing legislators, the OHA, everybody that we can. And I hope that you guys are doing that, too. I think that's important for athletes. Of course, all of my kids play water polo. My husband coaches water polo. I know there's a lot of water polo, parents watching and submitted comments. The pool is one of the safest places. It has chlorinated water. It's also warm inside. So hopefully, as soon as that can be opened, that will be allowed. So I just appreciate that consideration. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks again for joining us, Holly. So again, I I want to appreciate the YouTube for stepping up to to read them publicly. So that everybody is aware, I just draw your attention again. You can go to the district website, gresham.k12.org.us. Go to board information right under there. There's a big board docs link. That's where we store our meeting information. From there, you can access today's meeting. Go under citizens' requests of the board, and you'll see all of those letters that were submitted. With with a very common theme. So thank you both Lex and Holly for reading, but to everyone who submitted comments. I appreciate that. Okay, we're we're going to move forward in our agenda. To action items. First up, we have OSBA resolution and Board of Directors position seventeen and nineteen. So there are three distinct actions that are recommended of us, but I'll explain the public content. So the Oregon School Boards Association, which is called the OSBA, has referred one resolution to its member school boards for consideration this year. If approved, the resolution will adopt the proposed 2021-22 OSBA legislative priorities and principles. In addition, in the Multnomah County region, there are two board of directors positions open. And member school boards are asked to vote on the candidates who have filed for those positions. Following is a slate of candidates representing Multnomah County School Districts. OSBA Board of Directors position seventeen, Katrina Doughty, Multnomah ESD. And Michael Sonleitner from Portland Community College. And then for position nineteen, as Sonia McKenzie from Park Rose School District, unopposed or uncontested. Under OSBA's governance structure, member school boards are required to take official action on the slate of candidates by casting one vote. Meaning this is a board vote, not an individual vote. The voting period opens in mid-November. Gresham Barlow School Board traditionally delays its vote until early December so that we can hear from the candidates. This information is now being presented for our first reading and board action. The board secretary will submit a completed ballot online no later than 5:00 PM on Friday, December eighteenth. And there are some supplementary materials there for public review. So the first thing on the table is OSBA Resolution One, which adopts the proposed 2021-22 OSBA legislative priorities and principles.
So I would move to approve the OSBA Resolution Number One, which adopts the proposed 2021-22 OSBA legislative priorities and principles.
Second.
So it's been moved by Director Howard, second by Director Rosca Beach. To approve OSBA Resolution Number One, which adopts the proposed 2021-22 OSBA legislative priorities and principles. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to do just a brief discussion on it. The the process continues to evolve over time. It involves approximately forty-two board members from across the state. We meet several times over the course of the year. Some of these were virtual this time. And the best thing that's come out of it this year is it's a much more concise document. This allows our lobbyists and support people to really focus in on our message to the legislature. And also be consistent in the message that they give. So I think it's a very good document. And I think it's also a very good guiding principle for the Oregon School Boards Association to support their member districts.
Any other discussion? All right, so all those in favor?
I.
Hi.
I.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then that passes. Next up is the Board of Directors Position Seventeen.
I move to elect Katrina Doughty to the OSBA Board of Directors Position Seventeen.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Director Rosca Beach, second by Director Howitt to elect Katrina Doughty. To the OSBA Board of Directors Position Seventeen. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Okay. Last is OSBA Board of Directors Position Nineteen.
I I move to elect Sonia McKenzie to the OSBA Board Directors Position Nineteen.
Second.
Okay, moved by Director Rosca Beach, second by Director Howitt. To elect Sonia McKenzie to the OSBA Board of Directors Position Nineteen. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay. And next up is our district continuous improvement plan. This will require board action and Lisa Riggs, this says your name as presenter.
Thank you, Chair Peterson, Board and Superintendent. This action item was presented to the board for the first reading in November, November nineteenth at the work session. The schools and districts in Oregon are called upon to engage in continuous improvement plan work. For improving outcomes for students. A continuous improvement process is the process by which schools and district do a few things. One is determine what is working and what needs to change. Establish a process to engage stakeholders and affect change. Leverage effective practices and implement the plan. And then make adjustments based on data and monitoring to improve improve outcomes. The continuous improvement improvement process is the result of a development of ambitious priority-driven action plans. Where routine collaboration and decision-making among district leaders is reflected through our implementation. The CIP plan includes the strategic plan, ten supplemental questions. When submitting to the Oregon Department of Education and their budget narratives. The district must submit this plan to Oregon Department of Education by December thirty-first, 2020. And you'll see the attachment of the continuous improvement plan as requested. And it will also then be posted once approved onto the district website. And then sent to ODE and the processes described by their website as well. Any any questions?
Board, any questions?
I'll go ahead and move move to approve the district continuous improvement plan is presented for submittal to the Oregon Department of Education by December thirty-first, 2020.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Howitt, second by Director Stowers. To approve the district continuous improvement plan is presented for submittal to the Oregon Department of Education by December thirty-first, 2020. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay. I thank you, Lisa, for presenting it. Next up is Student Success Act, Student Investment Account, SIA grant approval. That is also you.
Chair Peterson and Board and Superintendent. Again, this was the SIA six or the Student Success Act, specifically Student Investment Account Grant. Was presented in the first reading, November nineteenth, at the work session. The Student Investment Account Funds are now available through the non-competitive state grant application process. The process for assessing these funds included three phasing phases that we did and were approved. Conducting a needs assessment, developing this the school improvement plan, the SIA plan specifically. And finalizing and implementing the SIA plan. The district finished the work of this phase and had a successful submission of the needs assessment and the continuous improvement plan. Last year to the Oregon Department of Education, November twenty-seventh, 2019. Prior to the deadline of December sixth. Finalizing this implementation plan was that ODE then since approved it. And and there was an agreement between ODE and the district. They reviewed and gave feedback, which there was no feedback. And the final grant agreement has to come back to the board for board approval. For the granted agreement that was previously submitted. Public review is required in that therefore we placed it on the business meeting. And we are, we gave an oral representation of the SIA plan at that open meeting last year. Opportunity for pump public comment was ongoing. And the availability of the SIA plan on the district website through the district office was made available. Once this is finalized and approved by the board, the SIA plan goes into action and continues to go into action and into review. But we are looking for the approval, so the SIA funds for the first of the biennium may be released. Again, the SIA grant agreement is attached. It was reviewed and the total, which was not the sum total that was previously recorded. Because of the changes in the the state taxes. It is now $2,977,716.16. Are there any questions?
Lisa, I'm wondering if the needs assessment will change, if those needs will change in any way now that that was done before the pandemic.
That's a great question, and thanks for asking it. We are in contact with ODE and Multnomah ESD is actually having us come together and talking just about that. Again, we we will be continuing the work around what is the need of our community and having those engaging conversations. And we know that the that that things changed in this last year and moving forward to the next rollout of the funds. So we will continue with that and updating you on any of the processes of the change currently. We we were approved and did not make any changes to this biennium's grant submission. And if there are ongoing changes, we will let you know.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would move to approve the Student Success Act Student Investment Account Grant as presented.
My second.
Okay, moved by Director Howitt, second by Director Gomez. To approve the Student Success Act Student Investment Account Grant as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay. Thanks again, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next up is the East Gresham Elementary School HVAC Noise Mitigation Project. This is Jordan Ely.
Thank you, Chair. Just a mic check. Can you hear me? Okay, nodding heads. Thank you. During the course of construction of East Gresham Elementary School, an opportunity to save money on the heating, ventilation and air conditioning system was presented to staff. And that option was accepted. The change to a different air handling system resulted in total savings in excess of $500,000. However, when the time came to commission the system, it was discovered that the system produced much higher noise level. Than the district had originally specified. Our root cause investigation found that the design change was was accepted by the architect and ultimately by staff. However, neither party realized at the time that the air handlers would produce more noise. Which is the result of a design difference in the fan units of the air handlers. Staff have worked with Cornerstone Management Group and an independent acoustical engineering firm to develop a mitigation strategy. The design for this mitigation was sent to our pre-qualified contractors. And three have indicated intent to provide a quote. The due date for bids is December fourth. Just a brief update off script. We actually have received four quotes so far. And we will, Cornerstone Management Group is verifying that they are all responsible bids before we make a contractor determination. An initial estimate from the contractor that built the facility indicated that this project could cost up to $250,000. Staff are requesting board authorization to enter into a contract not in excess of $250,000. With the lowest responsible bidder to perform this work. And as an accountability major, I will bring any bids received before the boards. At its work session on December seventeenth or at its January business meeting, depending on the preference of the board. And there is no attachment for this agenda item. Please disregard the monthly financial report goes with the financial report item.
So if I have a question, Chair Peterson?
Yes, please.
I I just want to make sure that I'm reading this right. So originally, we were going to be able to save 500,000. Now we're going to have to spend 250,000. So our net savings, we still have a savings of 250,000. Is that, did I do the math right?
Yes, the the actual savings was nearly $300,000 per unit, so $600,000. And total mitigation for both, there are two air handling units at East Gresham. Total mitigation project is $250,000 maximum.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
How loud is this?
That's a great question. It's it's an interesting thing. In normal operations, it's actually not. It it still exceeds our specification, but it's it's by about one decibel. And so it's not too bad. That's when it's running at seventy percent air handling capability. And at seventy percent, just so the board is aware, we still meet the air movement requirements for reopening our schools under COVID. So it is possible that we could run these units at seventy percent and not have an issue with noise. The the real concern is actually as. It it seems our our summers and and early falls are getting hotter and hotter. And so if we were to need to run the air conditioning system specifically. Is is when we would have to ramp these systems up to a hundred percent. At a hundred percent, they do exceed our standard by fifteen decibels. And in the workspaces directly below the air handlers, it's it's significant. You have to elevate your voice to be able to have a conversation with a person next to you.
Um, follow up to that question, this remediation will bring all of that on within the district specifications. Is that accurate?
Another great question. Thank you, Chair. No, at 100%, we will not be all the way to district specification, but we will be within five decibels. We were, I, I guess I should mention, we were not, the, the acoustical engineering firm was not able to identify a mitigation that could bring it under district standards at 100% capacity other than to take off the units we installed and install new units, which would cost about $700,000 per unit.
What, what's below these units? Is it classroom space? I'm not sure the layout of what, I know east has got elevation, but what is below those units? Where are they at?
There is a kind of an open space below one unit and there is an office below the other unit. And the office is used, I believe, for reading specialists. And so there is instruction, small group instruction that takes place in that office. We did tour the facility with Dr. Pereira and in the classrooms adjacent to where the units sit, the noise was within our standard for classrooms.
And if we didn't make these improvements, what would that funding be used for or what could it be used for?
Really? The, it can be used for anything that fits within the ballot title of the election back in 2016. And so we do have, we are on track to finish all of our projects with program contingency, assuming that our 2021 projects stay within budget. And so the district will facilitate a process of, of identifying needs throughout the district and prioritizing which projects fit within the ballot title and the ballot language that our voters passed in 2016 for other projects throughout the district. So it's, I don't want to say it's unrestricted, but there is a very broad use available for resources that aren't used.
Right, but just to clarify, Jordan, it's not for operations, it's strictly for capital projects. We can't use it for, for the regular operations. We can't use it for people. So it has to be buildings, not people. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is a great clarification and it, not just buildings, but depreciable capital investments specifically. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think to contextualize how I'm thinking about it, if, if this were three years ago and the district leadership team came before us and said, hey, we have a way to save $250,000 on our bond projects and it's going to result, and if the air handlers are running at 100%, it violates our standard by five decibels. That would be a very compelling case that we would accept this. I think the, the complexity enters that we feel like we have two different choices. And so really, you know, if we imagine that the district leadership team presented us with, we can run our air handlers, but only at 70% and we can save the district 500,000. We can save the bond 500,000, so we can save taxpayers. We can reallocate those dollars somewhere else within the bond program. Those are our choices, really. With a historic context, so.
And to clarify, it's one, one classroom, so it's one office space, but then beneath or one open space, but one office space that's only going to be impacted on the days where we have to crank up the air conditioning during the few, you know, small percentage of time at the end of the school year and possibly, you know, a small percentage of the time at the beginning of the school year and it's that one office.
Yeah, I, I should clarify, the open space that I refer to is actually an activity space that's designed into the facility for obviously not during COVID hybrid instruction, but when we return to normal operations, it's, it's designed as a space that the teachers can bring the students out into and the students can collaborate on art projects and, and different things like that. And it's designed to kind of encourage and facilitate community among the entire school. So it's, it's, it's not just that it's open and, and won't have kids working in it or anything like that. It's a, it's kind of a, an auxiliary instruction space.
Yeah, they're for STEM and for Makerspace sessions with our students. If you recall, we're touring East Gresham on the second floor and the open spaces on either hallway. They're really classrooms, to be quite honest with you. And when it's not being utilized that, I know that they do utilize that and have in the past, this past year, utilize it for small group instruction. And so being there and hearing the noise level and thinking about the vocal cords of our staff members and our students in those areas. Speaking to, to Jordan and to Terry, who was there with me, having to speak above my normal voice, just with the three of us was a challenge, which is why I give the thumbs up for it because it is pretty loud. So it's more than just an office and the, the open space, that open space is used for a variety of different things, it will be. I see them as a classroom, basically.
But if we took this project, for example, and then we had a list of other priority projects, right? That are just as important or a prioritization of other things. Do, do we have a list of other things that we can weigh in and maybe help guide us?
Uh, we are tracking what we call our good idea list. I can tell you from an instructional perspective, this would be the highest priority on that list from a staff perspective. I know that that's not necessarily the board perspective. But of the things on the good idea list, this, this would be the only thing on it that has a direct impact on instruction. And I can, I can produce a study, it's kind of a meta-analysis done by Penn State University. I want to say in 2014, 2015, that talks about how the physical environment directly impacts student achievement. It is quantifiable. And of course, air handling is, is a major part of our facilities. It would be also if we have wildfire smoke, things like that. We have to, we have to increase the fan speed. So, um, yeah, we, we do have what we're calling our good idea list. It's not, it has not been prioritized by staff. That is something that we will go through next spring. But I, I mean, we have it and, and I could show you the projects on it.
Well, just touring the facilities, like the swimming pool at Gresham High School, that was, needs a lot of help, things like that.
Yeah.
And Robyn projects, we have to bring back to the community. So we can't, you know, we have a list and we'll prioritize them, but we'll still need community input on those projects. But this one, again, my concern is that it is, that space is used for classrooms and the level, the voice level tone of 20 kids and a teacher is one thing, but also those, those voices and noises would, you know, echo down the hallway into other classrooms. So it, there is an impact. That definitely is an instructional impact.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd be willing to make a motion, we can take a vote on it. So I would move to authorize staff to execute a contract not exceeding 250,000 with the lowest responsible bidder for noise mitigation of the H V A C system at East Gresham Elementary School.
My second.
Okay, so it's moved by Director Howard, second by Director Gomez, to authorize staff to execute a contract not exceeding $250,000 with the lowest responsible bidder for noise mitigation of the H V A C system at East Gresham Elementary School. Any discussion?
I think what Mr. Ely brings up is that noise and noise mitigation is a big factor in students being able to learn. You have any kind of noise that even if you're not 100% aware of it, it's there. And so I think this is something that we need to do. We thought we were going to save a little bit more money, we'll still save some money and we'll have a better teaching environment for our students and for our staff.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to comment that it does sound like there is an impact, but it sounds like those impacts are minor and within a very small amount of days that that might even be an issue. So that's my comment.
Okay, any other discussion?
As someone who's in classrooms every day, when we're not in a pandemic, I know how disruptive those noises can be. And my colleagues and I, when I was at Gresham High, learned tricks and trades to like, you know, get over those things. But it's, it's disruptive, so I'm all for it.
Okay, any, any further discussion? All right, then all those in favor? Hi? Okay, we're going to do hands here. Okay, all those in favor? We need a report from Carla. Sorry, you're muted. Okay, that's an I. Okay, Dr. Per. If you wouldn't mind unmuting just for this. Okay, so one more time, call for eyes. All those in favor? I? Okay, opposed? Okay. Okay, thank you for bringing it forward, Jordan, and, and thank you for, board for the illuminating conversation as. That was good. Okay, next up, board and superintendent working agreements. The Board Operating Agreement Committee met on Monday, November 9th, 2020. That board committee is Myra Gomez and Chris Howard to discuss revisions to the Board Operating Agreement. They utilized the Board Operating Protocol adopted at the November 1st, 2018 Board Business Meeting, along with the previous board and superintendent working agreements to develop an updated Board Operating Agreement. The board reviewed the updates to the board and superintendent working agreements at the November 19th, 2020 work session. I'm going to ask Director Gomez to put you on the spot. Do you have any comments about this operating agreement?
No, we reviewed it and played out different scenarios to make sure that these working agreements would work for, for us, for, for the parties involved. So we made the revisions that we thought were necessary and those were the ones that we presented. Chris, anything that needs to be added?
No, I think, I think you nailed it. They make sure, they make sure that the board operates smoothly. They're based on making sure that we have things that we're following from our policy, from board duties, basic tenants, operation with the superintendent. We tried to make it, as Myra said, we tested out some various scenarios and how it would work and and we think it, it is suitable.
Okay, are there any questions of the committee? Okay. Well, there's a, there's a recommended action. Committee is bringing it forward, so if you wanted to, you could.
So I moved to adopt the board as superintendent working agreements for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Gomez, second by Director Howard, to adopt the board and superintendent working agreements for the 2020, 21 school year as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, thank you, committee, for the hard work on it. At this time, we have time for board reports and requests. Updates from board members, I'm going to start with Director Howard.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I was able to attend the Oregon School Boards Association Virtual Convention. It went very well, was attended by about half the normal people that attend in person. In our debrief, we talked about going forward that there might be a, a hybrid type of convention where there would be virtual or online presentations available as well as in person. If you were registered to attend and were unable to attend, the sessions and handouts and things are available on the Oregon School Board Association website for up to one year. We did have our follow-up Oregon School Board Association meeting just last night and had a couple of, of members that are no longer on the Board of Directors and we were welcoming in the new officers. And then with our election tonight, with the election, the rest of the, the folks, there'll be new people that come in to the, the board. It's been a little bit challenging running them virtually. But we've been making it, making it work. Our meetings are a little bit bigger and, but it does save, we're finding that it is kind of nice to not have to travel to go to the meetings. And I think that was really about, about it. So that's, uh, that's my board report, Oregon School Board Association work.
Great. Director Stowers?
No report, thank you.
Director Ruska Beach?
Um, I don't have much to report on my end either. I've just been, you know, busy working with Policy Review Committee and working with Rep. Elect Ruiz, just getting him situated there. So I look really, I'm looking forward to all the work coming ahead and hoping that we can work on the education committee. Doing all that. And I just want to give a quick shout out to all of our administrators and teachers and faculty, staff, students and families for surviving the year 2020. This is our last meeting, so I, I recognize all the work that you do. It's been a rough year for everyone. I'm getting grouchy myself with my old age, grouchy 32-year-old lady over here. But, um, other than that, no, I feel like everyone handled everything very gracefully and to 2021, cheers.
Director Paluso?
Thank you. My world right now is caucus meetings. Where we are going to have, I think, the last special session at the legislature. So in between zooming, that, that's keeping me quite busy in a, in just a strange way when I'm just sitting at my house doing it. So it's, it's been, it has been an interesting, interesting time with the COVID and all that kind of stuff. I do want to say that I'm really, part of what I'm looking at here at the Capitol as well is around our housing and human services for our, us, working around the need for housing, especially in East County and taking looks at how we can, how we can do things a bit better. It's been just such a challenging 2020, 2021, that it's, it's been, it's been rough for a lot of our, our constituents and the folks that we serve. So continue to, to follow that until the, the last day in, in December, when I will be heading to, to freedom as I will be retiring. So it's been a great, a great run and I've had a great job, a great time. So thanks, everybody.
All right, Director Gomez?
Um, I, I want to thank the SUN programs for putting together activities and materials for kids to be able to take home. My niece and I have been working a lot on those. And also I had the opportunity to participate, to attend that Gresham High School Family Night a couple of nights ago. And the, the team did an amazing job giving an overview of how they're managing this year because as Amanda said, it's not easy for any of us, for educators this year. So thank you to the Gresham High admin team for putting that together and sharing information with, with our families. I know we all deserve a winter break. I'm planning to take my entire winter break off of work and sleep most of it. So I hope teachers and all of our admin teams are planning to do the same. And I, and I want to thank the kids who sent us letters this And I and I want to thank the kids who sent us letters this week. I had the opportunity to read Alyssa's and Jamie, Jimmy, Emily Owens and Alexa for speaking tonight, Cambry. Thank you. If it was up to us, believe me, our schools would be open and our facilities would be open, because as an educator, I miss seeing kids. I miss doing classroom walkthroughs. I I miss, I miss being in a school, so I hope, I know where you're coming from. I have a freshman and a fifth grader at home, and both keep asking me, when are we going to open? They started asking that the week after spring break, so I know, I know how you're feeling. I know how parents are feeling. So know that we're with you and know that we're thinking about you. And thank you for voicing your 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 opinions with us tonight.
We we had parent-teacher conferences, which is just one more lens to see how awesome our educators are. You know, there's a, there's a lot of layers to virtual learning, but one of them is it heightens vulnerability for both families and for educators. And I just wanted to specifically call that out, that I I so appreciate the incredible steps that that our kids as teachers took to make them feel seen. You know, in a typical digital classroom, I might hear their voices pop up once or twice in an entire class, and that's just the reality that we're in, which is tough for elementary kids. And yet their teachers make them feel seen and heard. And and then parent-teacher conferences, some were probably in our school facilities, because this is before the new restrictions, but a lot of them were in their own homes, and you're just your lives, you lose that separation from from home to work, and that's really hard to work in. And so I just wanted to, one more time, and for today, and probably a lot more in the future, just appreciate our teachers, our staff that are are going through something that they never signed up for. Neither did our families. And I would agree with Director Gomez's sentiment, that this is a really hard time to parent kids. I think parenting is always hard, but this doesn't make it any easier. And and it's it's hard on our kids to be at home. I want to make sure that these decisions that are being made, the collateral damage is enormous. And and we should demand that our decision makers make make informed decisions about about the collateral fallout, too. And I think we need to get our kids back in schools as soon as possible. I totally agree with that, and we do need to get some activities restored. Just for their mental well-being, if nothing else. So anyway, that is the update from the board. How we move on to information items, Nutrition Services Annual Report, we're going to postpone. I don't believe that we're going to have that. Can I confirm that with? Yeah, I all, so we'll get our Nutrition Services Annual Report another time. Next up, we have the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Budget Development Calendar, and this has Jordan Ely's name on it.
Thank you. Excuse me, the the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Budget Development Calendar is presented to the board for review. The attached calendar does not reflect all of the steps staff will take to prepare this budget. Rather, it outlines the compliance steps in the budgeting process, which involve the board. I've bolded those, along with some key staff milestones. And I would just ask if if the board has any concerns with this calendar, to please let Dr. Pereira know at your earliest convenience.
Okay, any questions of of Jordan or Dr. Prayer? Okay, next, financial report. Jordan, you're back on.
Yeah, thanks again. As of October thirty-first, both revenues, that should say revenues and expenditures, continue to trend unfavorably, but the overall outlook is improving. These are still very early projections and are not immediately cause for concern nor optimism. Regarding revenue, the significant factors creating an unfavorable condition in the last report remain mostly the same, namely the lack of fees, gated admissions and facilities rentals, along with meager investments returns. And all revenue projections continue trending under budget by just over one point three million dollars. The major difference this month is a projected decrease of more than three hundred thousand dollars to our state school fund. This change is primarily the result of local tax, local property tax projections. While staff have left the district's forecast near the budgeted figure, several other large districts have preemptively adjusted theirs down, resulting in the state's calculation calling for more state school fund resources to go to them. We will not know until January whether these estimates are accurate statewide. However, if property taxes come in at the district's projected amount, other districts in the Portland metro area are likely to do the same, which will result in an estimated state school fund increase for the district in January. And I just want to pause for a moment, that's I I I didn't know how best to synthesize that. If if there are any board members who have questions about how the state school fund calculation works, it is a, it's a balancing formula that's used statewide to kind of use state resources to augment local resources that come from our property taxes. I'm happy to do that on a one-to-one. I just didn't want to take too much time going through that in this meeting. Regarding expenditures, the charter school payments line item is now on trend to exceed budget by nearly one point five million dollars. A projected deficit decrease of one hundred and five thousand under the last report. These payments are based on the number of students served by our charter schools, which has increased this year based on initial enrollment figures. The net result is a general fund with both revenues and expenditures projected to be lower than budgeted figures. However, the fund is currently projected to perform more than eight hundred thousand dollars better than the budget. So the delta between revenues and expenditures is actually trending better than budget. Along with a beginning fund balance greater than the budgeted amount, staff are projecting an ending fund balance of sixteen point seven million dollars at this time. But consistent with other reports I've given, these numbers are still uncertain and should not yet be used for future planning.
Any questions, Jordan or the staff? All right, for announcements, December seventeenth, we will have a board work session, presuming we're still under restrictions, we will be doing that virtually. Winter break, it's December twenty-first through January third, so there'll be no board meetings. We wish our administrative team a very, very good winter break. January seventh, we'll be back with the board work session board, regular board business meeting. In addition, I I hope I'm not putting Dr. Per on the spot. Could we get an update on the town halls that are upcoming? Would somebody be prepared to offer those dates?
Yes, I'd have to look at my calendar to do so, but we do have some coming up next year. But I think they're key communicators, and they're not SRO one is on December ninth. Typically for school safety and SROs, which is on December ninth, I think at six thirty. Am I right, Jordan?
Yep.
Yep, and we also have the Bond Oversight Committee on the same night. Bond Oversight Committee had already been scheduled when the time was identified for the SRO conversation.
Okay, so that conversation, December ninth, six thirty. I'd I'd encourage anybody who's listening to follow Gresham Barlow School District on social media. I think Athena and her team have done an outstanding job of pushing out that information. But yeah, so that town hall is in addition to those other announcements. All right, so there being no other business before the board, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for joining us.